All this Jackson County Commission meeting for our February 24th is in order. Have our own call.
This is Mr. Guffey.
Present.
This is Mr. Cleveland, present.
This is Mr. Miller, present.
This is Mr. Levin, present.
Chair also present.
And we have a quorum present. We have our invitation by Mr. Porter and our pledge by Mr. Levin.
God, our Father in heaven, we're blessed, continually blessed to be citizens of this country and citizens of this county. We have so many blessings, so many freedoms, we pray we'll never take them for granted and that those that we elect will protect those freedoms for us and help us protect those freedoms. God, we do pray for rain. We pray for rain for those that need rain for their livelihood and to make a living, but also to maintain the beauty of the surroundings around us. So, God, we pray for that. We pray for continued blessings upon this commission and those in this county. We ask these things in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have, next item to approve the agenda, we have 11 items on the agenda. Are there any changes before we proceed? Okay, no changes. Any kind of motion to approve the agenda with those 11 items? Motion of a second?
Uh huh.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. If they say no. No work presentations, no public comments, so let's sign up to speak. We have a minute from the September 26 meeting in our packets. Have any changes to that? Have motion to approve the minutes as they were presented?
No.
Motion of a second?
One second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. We have no old business, move up straight on the new business. And the first item is regarding community correction letter of support. This is a motion that has to be done or made today or not necessarily, but has to be done. What I wanted to do is update everybody on what we're looking at with our community corrections agency. Last year, I think it was, we had found that we had some responsibilities and relationships with the community correction agency, that there's an application that would be necessary to be on file, and several other things that we saw that we did not have paperwork for. So, we have been working with Mr. Brown and trying to gather a lot of that information. Two of the key things that we had requested were a financial audit as well as a, I don't know, I have that copy in here. The organization processes, what's that, what's the official term for that?
The Community Corrections Plan?
Yes, the Plan for Community Corrections, which is something we did not have on file either. So, they had submitted both of those items. We have some questions on the plan, I think, that they were taking a look at, and they resubmitted that, and there are a few other things we wanted to discuss on that. And you have a copy in your packets of the audit that was presented to us a couple of weeks ago as it was requested. So, the question at hand at this point, and it's not something, again, that has to be determined today, I don't know what kind of timeframe we're looking at. When is the latest that that letter can be submitted?
I just need to get it to them. It was due September 30th. So, there's more than this.
Okay. So, I think this is probably the first time you've all had an opportunity to look at this audit information that's been presented. But I wanted everybody to take a look at this and determine, you know, going forward, how we wanted to move forward with this. We do, at some point, if we do continue or if we submit the letter of support, we do need to have that application on file with us at some point in very near future to move forward with that. Again, they've got most of the information. I think this financial audit was one of the last things that we asked for, so I wanted everybody to take some time to review that and see if any questions or comments. So, are there any questions or comments at this time? Do you have anything that you'd like to add or say about that?
No, sir.
Okay.
If I could, Matthew, there's actually two audits. One is like a procedural audit, and the other, that's the thin one, and the one that's a little bit thicker is the financial.
Okay. And the procedural audit, I think we have received, that's done annually, correct? The procedural audit?
That's correct.
By the State Department?
Actually, it's just an independent accountant.
Oh, that doesn't proceed.
It's not performed by us, but an independent accountant.
Okay. So, again, we do need to make a decision on moving forward at some point. Actually, if there's no objections, and again, I'd like everybody to review this, if there are no objections, that does not need a decision by the commission to move forward with the letter. That's something we just sign every year. But I wanted everybody to take a look at this before we move forward with that to make sure that we had our guts in our own before we do that.
So, they're asking just for a letter of support based on the audit? Is that what this is about?
Every year, they provide a letter of support that we have to sign. I'm the one that signed it, the administrator for the county. But we sign that saying that the Jackson County Commission supports that organization, doesn't think it can receive. I'm not sure what all the purpose for that is. What is the purpose?
Is it just that our contract with the Department of Corrections requests that we get several letters of support, and they come from the judges, of course, the county commission? I think that's it on this contract. But, and this is the only one that we have outstanding that we have not received at this point.
And when it was brought up last year, did we realize that we actually had a role in this, other than just that letter of support that we did have a responsibility with that If everybody, like I said, will take a look at that, review that, let me know if you have any thoughts or concerns. If not, then we can move forward with that, hopefully within the next week or two. All right? Any other questions or comments? You have anything else you'd like to add?
No, sir.
Okay.
I do, well, actually, on the audit, the financial part, I do want to say, you know, in looking at that, that's revenues that stream all through community corrections, not just on the DOC contract that, and, you know, that I mean the letter of recommendation or the letter of support rather, those revenues are from all the community corrections. And I don't need, you know, a letter on all that, just on the DOC contract, to present to the Department of Corrections.
Okay. Anything else?
So, this letter from us is holding you up and filing your, I don't know, your statement?
Mr. I mean, we get the letter every year, and we've already signed this year's contract.
Mm-hmm.
But DOC, I always have it early, the letter, but this year, it's just holding me up on proceeding. I can't do much of anything else until I get the letter of support.
Anything else? Any questions or comments? If there's any questions or comments, please let me know, you know, throughout the week, and if none, then we can probably proceed with our. All right? Okay. Next item is update, or approve contractor, updating electrical at the county vote. We have Mr. Barnes, you want to discuss this or share this?
They took a chance with the bid on it. I think they did it two, three times. Seems like every time they did it, unless they go down a little bit further, but they're all, and they all get a little bit closer too. So, you know, that's the two I got. I got a copy of them. I got them before 10 o'clock today.
Now, again, this project is under the bid threshold, so we could approve this this afternoon, Mr. Porter.
They could.
So, do we have any questions or comments before we proceed, if we choose to proceed?
Just longer splitter, have they done any work down there before?
Um, yes, they wired the new count back to. We bought the material, they wired it in, and we paid them through the system. Anytime you have electrical work done, you gotta have certified electrician before they put the power on down there. And the other one is, they got the bid on the cabin and the office and that stuff.
The low bidder's asking for a starter check. You know, I'm not, I don't know if I've ever seen it before. Is that normal? Something I've asked for a starter check out up front?
I think we did on the playground equipment, I think.
They did.
That was a portion of it up front.
So, that's the door. That's the only one I know of. I mean, I don't know.
They're very close, you know.
Yeah, and like I say, they've been close every time, and they get a little cheaper every time.
Should we go again?
We've been down those three times, it might not be that.
So, the one's offering for us to set up a zero account, which sometimes would save us sales taxes, you know, the low bids.
Yeah, we just took through a PO.
I think both of them would be.
Yeah, yeah. Both of them would be. Yeah.
That would be how we'd have to do it to, in order to.
Sliding the sales credit screen.
Do you have a recommendation, Mr. Barnes?
I mean, it don't matter to me. I'd just like to get rewired so they would, so everybody would be satisfied down there.
Normally, I'll separate them, but I think give them a little bit. What about the $5,000?
That's been all I'm calling.
It's not. My being with all the time, especially with getting it, guys.
We need to verify, you know, the insurance and all with these.
That's why I didn't get any experience with them before.
Yeah, he's got a $10,000, $10,000 liability insurance. And I noticed TTB had also, I mean, they didn't, they didn't turn down with those bids, but I'm positive they did.
I'm sure they did.
So, is that a motion, and that's pending, of course, the proof? You said that they did already show that they have the liability insurance?
Uh, the first one did.
Okay.
But I'm pretty sure TTB does too, so.
The motion to go with quality electric, and can we have in that motion?
Yeah.
Compromising, yeah.
Can I guess they would have to draw a contract, have this, I don't know, or whoever y'all voted on again?
A motion and a second by Mr. Guffey. Further discussion? Yes, any agreement needs to be taken care of, we'll get that to us. Motion and a second, any further discussion?
I'd recommend that you add in there the subject to execution of an acceptable contract.
Okay. You want to amend your, amend the motion to include that?
Yeah.
amend the motion of a second on the amendment?
Yes.
All in favor of amending the motion to include that?
Uh huh.
All opposed? So, as it stands, the motion is to approve the low bidder upon the proof of the insurance, necessary insurances, as well as for the, say again, Mr. Porter?
Approval of an acceptable contract.
Right, okay. Motion and a second on that. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Okay. Next item is regarding the groats resurfacing. We discussed, we discussed in the board session last week to approve the list in its entirety as our goal for resurfacing, that we would move forward with each district as far as we could each year. It looked like maybe the first project in each district, our commissioner could select within that district which one they chose to move forward with if they have priority. But to approve the list in total as the upcoming projects over the next several years, of course, this list could be amended in the future. Is that correct, as to what was discussed last week? You recall that, Mr. Levin?
I think so, yes.
So, questions, comments on that? Is that what you understood last week?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any questions or comments? We have a motion to approve this list. Again, the, I think, what were we looking at? Eight miles this first year, six miles this first year? What we anticipated would be feasible?
Yes, sir. Seven and a half to eight, plus the outlier, that's the coal tax project.
Okay.
Trying to have an.
So, the coal tax, probably move forward with this year, then an additional seven to eight miles. So, do we have a motion to approve this list?
Make it motion.
Motion and a second. Okay. Any discussion? And if any, if we wish to push dollars even further to take from either the 112 or 116, that can be done at any time and apply to these projects, provided the thunder available. So, a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, say no. Okay. Okay, next item is a motion of support for the constitutional amendments the state will have on November 2016, ballots that were presented last week. All three of these, 3, 4, and 14, are ones that identify or are related to the county and have an impact, a direct impact on us. So, what we discussed last week, we're just showing our support for these amendments and the need for them to pass if we want to move forward with that. It's not necessary, but it is something the ACCA has recommended. Any questions, comments? And I think you guys, a couple were out last week, so just to clarify what each of these are. Amendment number three allows for local issues that are a, the constitutional amendment to be controlled more by their local governments. In other words, if there was a law that was applicable just to Jackson County and it passed throughout the state, but Jackson County voted it down, it could not become law because Jackson County voted it down. It also allows for provisions in which that law, constitutional limit, could come up in just Jackson County, not as a statewide referendum, if the legislative side chose. Item number four is, gives us ability to handle some administrative tasks. The example that's used is giving a law enforcement officer their badge after retirement. That's something that, right now, you have to have a local law, and that's one thing. I'm not sure if we may have a local law on that already, but this applies to several different things. It does not give us home rule. It does not allow us to raise taxes, does not give any programs, additional programs that would allow us to infringe on property rights, but technically have some authorities with, what's the, litter laws and things like that. But it doesn't give us any of those extra authorities that have not been given at this point. And then it doesn't allow us to interfere with the duties of other elected officials. So, it's, again, just basic administrative day-to-day operations that this would allow for the county commissions to do. Item 14 is very important to us because it could affect several of our local bills that could cost the county about roughly half a million dollars if item 14 doesn't pass. And, of course, that's a huge chunk of change that we can't afford to lose to our general fund. So, this authorizes those local bills that have been placed on the books, turned late on the books due to a possible error that's been passed. The case that this, that has brought this into question is working at Quaker the Court, if I understand correctly. So, this is to prevent anything negative from occurring and basically mooting that case and making sure that the constitution, or the local laws in place are as they should be. Questions or comments on any of those? Do we want to move forward with the motion of support for these items?
I'd make a motion to support.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Okay, next item, appropriation from Commissioner Levin, a lottery fund for Walter Fire Association. I think this was something that had been discussed previously, and I don't know that we ever voted on it, so we need to move forward with that. So, we have a motion to approve. What was the total amount?
Yeah, it was a thousand total. Some kind of printer or something, so the four parks can have their name, they have their badges.
So, do we have a motion to approve that?
Make a motion.
Motion and a second?
One second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, say no. Next item, motion to approve employee resignation from the Public Works Department. You have a letter in your packets. Mr. Campbell, do you have anything you want to say on that?
No, sir. I'll just reference the October 17th dated letter for that employee's resignation.
And we'd asked to advertise for this for vacancy as well.
Yes, sir.
Any questions, comments? Have a motion to approve that resignation?
Make a motion to approve the resignation.
Motion and a second?
Uh huh.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, say no. Next item is regarding termination of an employee from the Public Works Department and the advertisement of that vacancy. You have a copy of that letter in your packets. Do you have anything to add to that, Mr. Campbell?
No, sir. I'll just reference October 20, 2016 dated letter, and then the attachment, also the acknowledgement or receipt of policy in question.
Okay. Any questions or comments on that?
There is a probationary employee, right?
Yes, sir.
Do we have a motion to approve that termination?
So, move.
Motion and a second?
Stand.
Motion and a second, all in favor say aye. Opposed, say no. Okay, next item is motion to approve recommendations for the five vacant temp positions for the public works. You have a letter there with the five names for that, the rate and the recommended beginning service, is that correct? Effective date. Anything you'd like to add to that, Mr. Campbell?
No, sir.
Okay. Any questions or comments on this? Do we have a motion to approve this recommendation for these temp positions?
Make your motion.
Motion and a second?
Okay.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, say no. Next item was regarding a motion to advertise, or a motion to open a temporary custodial position with courthouse maintenance and the advertisement necessary. The policy states that this can be appointed upon recommendation of the director. We would like to possibly open it for advertisement and possibly present a recommendation next week. The issue here, I think everyone is aware, we do have a member of our maintenance crew who is out, who's been very sick. So, we need, have a need for a temporary custodian. We follow the same guidelines as our other temporary positions with the same rate of pay as well as the maximum length of service. I think it's two six-month consecutive terms, is that correct, Mr. Porter?
Correct.
But, again, this would be just for the first six-month term as a temporary custodial position. So, are there any questions or comments on this?
The one that's out, it's not a custodian. It's not a custodian.
That's where the need would be. Our current staff is assisting right now with the, with some of the other duties, and as a temporary employee, this would be a recommendation from the department. But this is where we would find someone to assist the best. We will have some recommendations next week if this moves forward based on, based on the selection process for this. So, any questions or comments? Do we have a motion to advertise what's necessary for this position?
Make it motion.
Motion and a second?
Say.
Okay. Again, I'll mention next week to you, but we hope to have that recommendation next week. Okay, motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed, say no. Next item, motion to approve the change order for the park. This is for issue that arose a month or so ago regarding sprinkler systems in the cabins. It was something that needed to be included in that process, and sprinkler system, alarm system, and smoke alarms in each of the cabins. You have the total amount there of the change order for that entire change. Do you have anything you want to say on this, Mr. Barnes? There is an option as to whether we needed to add a regress into both of the rooms or whether we added a sprinkler system, and sprinkler system was the lower cost option.
What was included in the original contract that specified out? It's probably.
They were treated as single-family dwellings, and the language in the fire codes said that since the possibility for trains in nature, they had to have a regress door or a sprinkler.
My understanding is it's been, well, I don't know what's been done in the past, but that this was held strictly to in this particular project. That we were held strictly to, Mr. Parker, in our project. I don't know.
It was looked by, by some other municipalities and other places.
The firm we have, I would figure they called that.
I have no comment.
It was discussed, as I understand it, was discussed originally, however, it was not, it was not seen as necessary, did not believe it would be necessary. Other questions or comments?
And our inspectors, you're holding this to this, what you say?
Fire marshal, local fire marshal.
And the state?
State, to be back, our local. Do we have an option in this case?
Not really, no.
It's been waived in other than probably, but it was up to the local fire marshal.
My understanding is with a change of rules or change of something, there's a, this is enforced at this point, and will be enforced going forward.
Does anybody from the county dispute with the motion?
Yes. Actually, I think we had a meeting, it's been a few weeks ago, with, it was in that meeting. Were you Mr. Bennett?
No.
Were you Mr. Barnes?
No.
Okay. Yeah, the fire marshal ourselves and the engineer, or the architect, they were present, correct? To discuss what our options were, and there was no option that they were giving us other than to move forward with this. We had to appeal that to the state fire marshal, and that's where we got the word that it had to be, we needed to stick with it.
It don't have to go in the office, right?
Do it.
It don't, doesn't have to go in the office.
Because the cabins, what the chandors is, parts of the.
We gonna move forward with this or hold off, maintain the motions and how we want it to be?
I have a question, I have a tree to remove. Is that not in the early planning stages? Is that not considered?
The seven additional trees, do you know the details on the seven additional trees?
Um.
Those were ones that we chose to have removed afterwards, correct? We chose to.
Well, you know, we went in there and picked out the one that we was going to do. Now, the ones that was going to be in the road and those kind of things, we didn't do it, so they had to come out anyway.
Right.
So, I don't know if those was added in.
I believe the ones that are.
If these trees are standing in the way of construction, that should have been foreseen.
Right. I believe these extra trees were the ones, when we decided we were going to fill in that ditch, I know that half of these trees came from the filling of that ditch.
I think a couple of them did, but some of them was, lady was saying that they was too close to the cabin, too close to the cabin, and those sort of things, so, you know, I don't, I need trees over seven, seven.
I mean, that's seven, that's a lot of trees to overlook when you're planning a project like that, in my opinion.
Is that the one that you discussed about, they're just saying it's too close to the cabin for a storm or something? It really is not handling the construction. They just think they're going to follow them, right?
Right. And they're thinking, if you're not far enough away from them, once you start digging, their foundation and stuff, and they're going to stir the roots and they'll die anyway, well, you know, that could be a yea or nay, you know?
Yeah.
They could, they could.
That's for the trees. We can get a clarification on those if we need to. I believe four of them were in that ditch. I know of one other one that was on the, by the cabin, that we chose to keep to begin with, and he said we may have to remove it, but we'll see.
The seven trees, they're supposed to take out, or they marked them anyway now?
They're all gone now.
Have they already taken out?
Oh, so we don't pray that they're already gone?
They had to, they had to take them out before they would do the foundation.
Okay, so they're already gone.
Yeah, they.
I'm good with the trees. I just, I'm disappointed that our marshal wants us to spend $50,000 more on sprinklers and I, I. and I, I personally think we should hold off on that portion till we bring them to a meeting, except if we can't do something besides.
You're welcome to meet with them, but they're stuck in the money on it.
They already met with them.
Yeah, well, they're local. It's that fire marshal's city, you get to see her.
So is that a draw if they have a full, I don't know, I'm not supporting that.
I don't.
That's 50 grand and I don't think we should be held to any higher standard than anybody else.
Can our, can not, not take, take some of that blame and pay some of it?
My, my concern is if we don't do it and there is an accident down there, we're seeing the liability.
So in, in your dealings and experience with them, they're not going to change your mind.
I don't.
I don't believe they will either. I don't know that there's any way that we'll get out of putting those sprinklers in. We may, I, I don't know of any way we could reduce the cost, but those sprinklers will have to end up in those cabins.
Yeah, we had the smoke alarms in this change order too. Surely God, we had smoke alarms for this reason.
That, that's, yeah.
Now that's, um, the.
You know, we had a discussion with the architect, you know, maybe they should assume some of that. Yeah.
I make a motion to approve the removal of the trees.
Have a motion in a second.
Second.
Okay, motion for the change order number four. And a second, we have a second for that. So any discussion on this? Let's take this and let's discuss third, number three a little bit more. So for number four, we have a motion in second, all in favor say aye, opposed say no. Okay, for item number three, how we want to proceed with this, we did meet with the fire marshal and it is going to require, understanding there was an oversight on another court of this, do we want to set another meeting for a couple of commissioners to meet with and have this discussion?
Whether we even want to meet with the fire marshal or K P S?
I think K P S. I think, as I understand it, and anyone, obviously, if we want to meet with the fire marshal, we can do that. But I don't see that there's any way that we're, you know, that's, that decision will be changed.
Will this hold up construction whatsoever?
We've only got two out of the ground, is that correct?
They're framing on, they're framing on two right now. They're starting on the nerve.
Needs to be sized pretty quick.
Yeah, and with the wiring and all, while that construction, it's got to be done.
Right, that wiring, yeah.
We don't want to hold nobody up.
I mean, a week or two will, will make a difference. A week or two will make a difference.
And you know more about how quickly.
Two weeks will make a difference.
We've got a meeting next week, can we agree on that? Next week's agenda. Or just a few days difference?
With your life we set up?
With the next week for fifth meeting?
Is we've got to make some appointments on some personnel notes.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll have that item on next week's agenda for item for change order number three. Okay, next item, motion to approve hiring for a recommendation for the vacant full-time bus driver. We have a letter in our packets for that. Any questions or comments on this? This was a vacancy made by a transfer from an individual from COA to the park, so this is still in that position. We have a motion to approve the recommendation.
Make a motion.
Motion in a second.
Make a motion.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye, opposed say no. Okay. Please, the items on our agenda, moving on to our reports. Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Manning?
Yes.
T C B?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Lemon?
Yes.
Mr. Guffey?
Yes, sir.
Okay, the only thing I have is that next Monday will be the last meeting we have, less than other special ones called, prior to the election, November 8th election. We do have some positions that are being interviewed this week for the probate office, so I would like to ask that we meet next week. And I asked about next Monday morning, I think the recommendation is at 9:00. Would 9:00 work for everybody next Monday morning? So we will have a called meeting, 9:00 a.m. Monday, the 30th of March, here. And the items on that agenda will be the probate positions, the possibility of any of the changes in the maintenance, and then the item, change order that was discussed. And we'll try to limit that, let something else, we'll try to limit the agenda for those items. So any other questions or comments? Okay, we have a motion to adjourn. Motion in a second.
Good.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor say aye, opposed say no.